Good morning, good morning, good morning, everyone. I'm Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District and the Chairperson for the Public Health and Environment Committee. Also joining us today, we have Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. We have Councilman Mark Parker from the 4th District.
First District.
Oh, 1st District. And then we also have Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District. We are here to discuss 21-0015R for the purpose of inviting members and representatives from the Mayor's Office, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Public School System, the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs, and the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Office of the State's Attorney, the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, for the purpose of providing an update on the general well-being of the trans community in Baltimore City. As we enter Pride Month, we're going to have a very robust conversation today about LGBTQ well-being, not just for the transgender community, but also for the gay and bisexual community as well. And it's very important for us to have this conversation now, given where we are in the United States. And so, I want to make sure that we, as a council, have a pathway forward for these persons within our community, that they have varied, that they have a varied, finite approach to services, and they know where to go and how to adapt within our city. So, I'm going to turn it over to the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs to provide us with opening remarks, and then we'll go into a series of presentations. From there, I'm going to change it up a little bit. I'm going to provide a public testimony, as opposed to going to questions from colleagues. I want to make sure that we prioritize representatives in the room from various organizations in the city of Baltimore. So I'll stop there. Ma'am, I'll turn it over to you, if you can announce your name and then go through your comments.
My name is Alexis Blackman. I am the interim Director of the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs in Baltimore City. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing on the trans well-being. My name is Alexis Blackman, as I said, and I'm proud to serve as the interim Director of the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs. It is an honor to stand before you and share the work of our office today, and how we improve the lives of transgender and gender-expressive residents in Baltimore City. The Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs is committed to advancing equity, safety, health, invisibility, and belonging for our trans community and all of the LGBTQ community in Baltimore City. From annual observations of structural reform and our work that reflects a whole-city approach, in collaboration with both internal departments and trusted organizations throughout the city. Our office leads and supports several events throughout the year of trans and gender expansive individuals. We host Transgender Day of Visibility on March 31st, Transgender Day of Remembrance on November 20th, World AIDS Day on December 1st, HBCU sow pride graduations in May, and participate in Pride, Black Pride National Coming Out Day, and several other landmark events for the LGBTQ community. These events are more symbolic than they are a space of healing and organizing visibility and empowerment. While celebrating is valuable, so is structure and support. Our office is currently engaged in following transgender initiatives, with gender-neutral bathroom compliance. In partnership with the Department of General Service, we are auditing and enforcing compliance in the city-owned buildings with Baltimore Gender Neutral Bathroom Law, ensuring that trans and non-binary people can access public restrooms in a safe and accessible manner. We have expanded our trainings, and this is something that I prided myself on when taking this position, expanded our training with the Baltimore City Police Department and our Consent Decree. So we've collaborated with doing onboard training with all of the new coming-on staff, but I wanted to make sure that staff that were already present was being trained. I have also taken the training and started to expand it to all of Baltimore City employees, because I don't believe it should just be a public safety thing. I believe we all need to know how to treat our counterparts with dignity and respect. I have also virtualized the training, so if a person doesn't want, because our office is so small, we have three, two to three people, if we don't have time to train everyone, it's a workday component that I came up with, so that everybody can take the opportunity to learn some more things. So we have a workforce training modernization. We have digitized and modernized the LGBTQIA-inclusive training for all cities, like I said, throughout the workday. And accountability and impact metrics. Our work is data-driven, so we report quarterly across six key metrics, which are the number of agencies that we have audited.
And if you can stay in the mic, so everyone can hear you.
Like this? Is this one better?
That one's good.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. So, we have six different metrics that we grade ourselves on, one being the bathroom bill, the number of agencies audited for inclusive and democratic data collection, the number of public safety officers that, the number of public safety officers that are being trained. And since I have been in the interim capacity, we have exceedingly went way past the numbers of what we were training before. So those are some of the things that we're doing. But we do have some partnership anchors with different organizations within the city, one of those being Free State Justice, Maryland Safe Haven, The Pride Center, as well as Joy Baltimore Sage, Chase Braxton, and AHF. These organizations are some of just the primary organizations that we partner with and do referral sources to, to refer citizens to for different services. In closing, I want to emphasize that trans well-being is not a single program or a moment, it is a sustained commitment to equality and justice throughout Baltimore City. We are committed to build a Baltimore where every trans person not only survives but thrives. We thank the city council for recognizing us today.
Thank you so much, Director. And I'd also like to acknowledge that we have Council President Zeke Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Next, we're going to transition to the Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Zachary Wallman. I'm the Equity Posseianist for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. The OECR would like to give a presentation later in the hearing, however, the work of the OECR to combat discrimination and police misconduct, particularly against trans individuals, lesbian residents, and gay residents, particularly in this case of this hearing, trans residents, is critical, especially among the numerous executive orders from the Trump Presidential Administration that impacts a lot of the work that we touched directly, namely, for example, Executive Order 14148, Initial Recession of Harmful Executive Orders, Executive Order 14168, Defending Women from Gender Ideology Extremism and Restoring Biological Truth to the Federal Government Actions, and Executive Order 14288, Strengthening and Unleashing America's Law Enforcement to Pursue Criminals and Protect Innocent Citizens. A lot of these actions put at risk Baltimore residents and also put at risk the work that the office is committed to doing to protect and defend trans residents in the city. So, we're very supportive of this informationary hearing and are excited to share some of the work and services that we provide to trans residents when we are able to give a presentation.
Sure. Are you able to present now?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, present now.
Okay. Okay. Again, I'm Zachary Wallman. If I may, I would just like to take the time during this informationary hearing to highlight some of the work that OECR does and the services OECR provides that are particularly relevant to the well-being of trans Baltimoreans. However, this presentation also would apply to the larger queer community within Baltimore as a whole, including lesbian and gay residents. As a foreword, this presentation is geared towards trans residents specifically, because we would like to acknowledge the vastly different lived experience of transgender individuals compared to cisgender queer individuals. However, the information being shared is relevant to the broader queer community as a whole. As such, I'll try to make sure to highlight throughout this presentation the relevance of information within the presentation to cisgender, lesbian, and gay residents as well, wherever applicable. Next slide, sorry. Yes. One moment, please, sorry. No, no, no. I can't see from here, so yes, I have to have it on here, and it's just a little.
Oh, yes, 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 of course.
I'm good now.
And just let us know, just let us know if you want us to move it on to the next slide.
Got it, thank you.
Perfect.
So, just to start out, I would like to, for those who are unfamiliar, kind of highlight who we are and what we do. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights is a city agency devoting to advancing equity, upholding federal and local civil rights laws, the local living and prevailing wage laws, ensuring access and equal opportunities for persons with disabilities, providing oversight to local law enforcement, and also ensuring, enforcing anti-discrimination and discriminatory practices within the city. Our mission is to carry out activities that eliminate inequity, inequality, and discrimination, including that of transgender individuals and the broader queer communities as a whole. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights consists of the Equity Division, the division, sorry. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights consists of the Equity Division, that is the division that I'm from, the Police Accountability Division, that consists of the Police Accountability Board, acronym that we use is PAB, and then the Administrative Charge Committee, the acronym for that is the ACC. The Community Relations Commission, that is the commission that investigates and enforces cases of discrimination, we use the acronym CRC for that. The Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, this makes recommendations as it relates to accessibility within the city and matters that relate to disability advocacy, we use the acronym MCD for that. The Wage Commission, which is the body that enforces local living and prevailing wage laws, we just nicknamed that wage. The Women's Commission, which makes recommendation on the equity, representation, and well-being of women within Baltimore City. And the Veterans Commission, which is the body that is committed to doing the same as Women's Commission, but for the veterans.
One second. I'll just want to let you know, we are experiencing technical difficulties, there is nothing that we can do regarding the sound, so we are just going to power through and keep going. So, thank you. Please continue.
Just, so first, we'll go into the Equity Division. Next slide, please. So the Equity Division works to ensure that the city's policies, programs, and our budget is fair, it meets the needs of Baltimore City's diverse communities, and it prioritizes the diverse interests and lived experiences of individuals in the city. The Equity Division supports and champions practices that respect different lived experiences and viewpoints based on gender identity, race, ethnicity, culture, physical and intellectual disability, and other protective characteristics. What the Equity Division does for trans residents is review citywide policies and practices, as well as city and state legislation for equity. We do so with a foremost perspective on the equity of trans residents and the queer community as a whole. It conducts trainings on equity for city agencies, and it is also responsible for conducting the equity assessment of Baltimore City government. In all of these aspects, we prioritize and we keep in mind the equity of trans residents and the queer community, and ensuring that those individuals are being represented by our city, represented by the policies that we are enacting, represented by our budget, and represented in the internal city agency practices that we're conducting throughout the year. Gender identity, including transgender identity, is one of the many intersecting social identities that the Equity Division considers. For example, during the 2025 Maryland Legislative Session, it's the one that just concluded this April, the Equity Division reviewed and advocated against a harmful transphobic bill, House Bill 156. This bill would have harmed transgender students, athletes within the state barring them for participating. It is a very, like, hot cultural touchpoint throughout the country, and we were very, very firm on our advocacy against the bill, and thankfully, we were able to ensure that the bill didn't make it out of the General Assembly. Next slide, please. Next, we'll move on to the Women's Commission, and touch a little bit on how the Women's Commission represents transgender individuals within the city. Next slide. The Baltimore City Women's Commission believes in a high quality of life and in equal rights, opportunities, and access to services for all women, women identifying non-binary and/or assigned female-at-birth individuals. The Women's Commission affirms that transgender women are women and is gender-inclusive in their mandate. As such, the Women's Commission functions as a resource for transgender people in accessing information, services, and other programs throughout the city intended to improve their lives, the lives of their family, and it also holds frequent events tailored around improving awareness and support programs available. We hold them pretty much on like a bi-monthly basis at minimum. The Women's Commission is a safe first stop to find support for transgender individuals and for the broader queer community as a whole, and it holds open meetings that anybody in the public is welcome to come and listen in on the last Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM. Next slide, please. So these are an example of some of the recent community engagement events that we've conducted. In December, we had a Community Resource Fair. This March, we held an annual Women's History Month Luncheon. And then, in, oh, sorry about that. And then in February, we had a supporting family member, or family member caregiver's luncheon as well. In all of these events, we hold, you know, we provide resources to the community, not only as it pertains to women, women identifying individuals, people assigned female at birth, and queer individuals as a whole, but also information, pamphlets, booklets, papers, and we table those events for all of our boards and commissions, so that we ensure that we're getting, you know, the maximum amount of outreach to target the individuals that we're here to serve and to help. Next slide, please. Next, we'll move a little bit into how the Police Accountability Division is particularly, like, important for the equity and the well-being of transgender individuals in the city. Next slide, please. The Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charge Committee were created by Maryland's state mandate. The law that enabled both of these was the Maryland Police Accountability Act of 2021. You may have heard it be nicknamed Anton's Law, or HB 670, as it was known while it was passing through the General Assembly in 2021. But essentially, what this law and then what our local laws here establishing the Police Accountability Board and ACC do for trans people is that it ensures that they're entitled to fair and accountable policing. The PAB receives all complaints of police misconduct without limitation involving a member of the public, and then refers them to the appropriate law enforcement agency for investigation. Then, after the law enforcement agency conducts that investigation, those cases are then handed to the ACC for review to make a determination whether to administratively charge an officer as it relates to an instance of misconduct. This is important particularly to trans residents, as in a study from the ACLU, it was found that 28, I mean, 26.8% of transgender people report experiencing physical force by police, 30.7% of transgender respondents report being arrested, as compared to 20% of all LGBTQ people, and 13.6% of non-LGBTQ people, 44.9% of transgender, and 33.1% of non-binary respondents experienced insulting language by the police, as opposed to 14.6% of cisgender, just broader cisgender LGBTQ men, 61.3% of transgender, and 27.4% of non-binary respondents report being likely to call the police for help, as opposed to 80% of cisgender LGBTQ people, and 86.9% of non-LGBTQ people as a whole. So there's a big disparity there in terms of, like, the trust that transgender individuals and, I'll move on to next, the broader queer community as a whole has for police, and that is, you know, indicative of a broader relationship between policing as an institution with those individuals. And it is something that reaffirms the necessity for the work of the PAB and ACC to rebuild that accountability, that trust, and ensure that those individuals feel like they can be represented and protected by their police. As a comparison, 11% of gay respondents, cisgender gay respondents reported experiencing physical force by the police, as opposed to, and then 9.7% of lesbian cisgender respondents reported that, as opposed to 7% of non-LGBTQ people, 20% of all LGBTQ respondents reported being arrested, as compared to 13.6% of non-LGBTQ residents, 15% of cisgender gay residents, and 22% of cisgender lesbian residents, I mean, of residents respondents, I apologize, report experiencing insulting language, as opposed to 9.9% of non-LGBTQ respondents, and 82% of gay respondents, and 71.5% of lesbian respondents reported being likely to call the police, as opposed to, again, 86.9. So when we break it down, there is a very vast disparity there between the experiences of transgender, non-binary individuals, and then also the experience of cisgender, gay, cisgender lesbian respondents, and then comparing that even to cisgender, non-LGBTQ Next slide, please. So, while we have the floor, we want to just highlight the ways in which, if you feel as though you may have been impacted by police misconduct and you would like to file a complaint, how you could go about doing that. So there's a couple ways. You could go online to the Office of Equity and Civil Rights website and fill out a online complaint intake form. You could visit the Office of Equity and Civil Rights in person. We're located on the 9th floor of 7 East Redwood Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21202. Or you can fill out the incomplete, the complaints and intake form printed out from online, and you can mail it into our office as well. All of those ways are valid ways to submit a complaint to us, as well as you may submit a complaint to law enforcement agencies themselves. Contact information for those are listed on the right. And all of those ways of submitting complaints will get you into this police accountability process that we're talking about, in which your complaint is going to be investigated, and it will be reviewed by the ACC. Next slide, please. A little bit on how, once you submit a complaint, that process is handled, so that you're not in the dark and you're confident that your complaint is being handled with expediency, with integrity. In order to, you know, kind of ensure that everyone in the public has confidence in that, I want to just highlight how we handle those complaints and what the process for that is. Under the law, complaints must be resolved within one year and one day. That will be changing, it is not effective yet. So currently, as it stands, complaints must be resolved within one year and one day. And here are some important points to remember. First, you will file a complaint. Any member of the public can file a police misconduct complaint, and they are able to follow that, as shown before. It is reviewed by OECR and PAB before being forwarded to the appropriate investigating agency. After the investigation is completed, it is sent to the ACC for review, and then a decision is made. From there, the decision is either able to be accepted by the officer, or if it is not, it would go through the process of a trial board. Next slide, please. And then finally, I want to highlight the Community Relations Commission, probably the principal agency as it relates to the well-being of transgender residents and the queer community in Baltimore. Next slide, please. The Community Relations Commission is an agency dedicated to enforce Article 4 of the Baltimore City Code. That prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, religion, national origin, ancestry, age, sex, color, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, and/or gender identity or expression. Prohibited areas of discrimination under Article 4 are employment, public accommodation, education, health, welfare services, and housing. The CRC receives and investigates discrimination complaints. They have the authority to subpoena information, witnesses, to hold public hearings when conciliation attempts fail, and to issue cease and desist orders to take unsolved cases to court. The commission also develops and monitors formally negotiated conciliatory agreements.
And I'm sorry, sir, you have one minute left.
Got it.
Thank you.
About to finish. Next slide, please. Similar to the PAB, this is how you file a complaint with the CRC. Similar methods, you can file them online, in person, or by mail. And on the right, I just want to highlight, we're time limited, but some of the rights that you have as a complainant, to make sure that you're navigating this process appropriately and know what rights are afforded to you. Next slide, please. And finally, I just want to highlight some of the process for submitting complaints with the CRC. You, first you file a complaint, there's a fact-finding conference, at which point, after we conduct that fact-finding conference, there is an extended investigation that OECR investigators conduct that. There's a conciliation attempt, at which point, if that doesn't work, it transitions to a public hearing held by the CRC. An important point is that a quality investigation takes time, so just please be patient. It is not bound by that one-year-and-one-day timeline that the police accountability process is. So just be prepared, be on standby, be, you know, communicative with your investigator, and responsive to any inquiries that they have, any calls that they make. Update your investigator if you make any changes in your address, or any license, and the status of your investigation changes, or anything related to that. And just remember, you are protected in your right to file a complaint. It's unlawful to harass, intimidate, or penalize you in any manner for filing a complaint or take any action against you. So be confident, and you can come to us, no matter what, if you feel like you've been discriminated on the basis of your gender, or gender identity, or sexuality. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was such a great wealth of information. And for all, we'll make sure that this presentation is available on Legistar. The information that you just shared was so very important procedurally. If you do go into an issue, you have the proper ways to not only file a complaint with the Office of Civil Rights and Equity, but also to get relevant resources within your office as well. So I thank you for your presentation. Next, I'm going to turn it over to the Police Department.
All right, good morning, everyone. I'm Arnold Jenkins, the Major for the Youth and Community Partnerships Division. So I'm going to begin, before we get to our slides, by reading our mission statement. The Baltimore Police Department is dedicated to upholding the Constitution and enforcing laws in a fair, impartial, and ethical manner. We commit to creating and maintaining a cultural service that builds trust and legitimacy in all communities, values the sanctity of life, and provides for the safety and well-being of all. So this is about dignity and respect. If you would, if you could go on to the first slide. All right. So first of all, thank you all for having me here today. We're going to go through some of our policy language. So this is Policy 720. So just to explain the policy itself, the reason I read the mission statement to you is to understand why this policy exists, what it's based upon. It does go through a consent decree implementation unit process, where it goes out for public feedback, it also goes out for feedback beyond that. The monitoring team, in conjunction with the DOJ, also reviews it, to take a look at it, and then finally, it's finalized after training is given to all our members. So, starting with the first point, BPD members shall use names, pronouns, and titles of respect as requested, expressed, or clarified by the person with whom they're interacting. Officers will never require proof of someone's gender identity. So in no circumstances shall BPD members refer to a person as any other pronouns besides how the person requests to be addressed. If you would, let's go on to the next slide. So looking at this for the search, for example, so we're going to honor the person's preference about the gender of the member conducting the search. So cisgender male, for example, would search a transgender male. So if no preference is given by the person being searched, then the gender identity of the member conducting the pat-down will be consistent with the individual's gender identity. Gender-affirming items, such as binders, waves, cosmetic items, should not be removed unless required to perform a law enforcement action, for example, an unsafe situation. And so, that last bullet point, if a gender-affirming item must be removed, the search will be conducted in private. Next slide, please. All right, so for transports, so this is dedicated actually with its own specific policy as well. So if you look at transports in particular, multiple condition checks are required, this is to include transport vehicles. If you look at this in particular, it mentions transgender and intersex people being transported with other arrestees of the same gender identity. So if safety is a concern that is raised, the individual will be transported alone. So in general, regardless, if you have a situation that you believe is unsafe- So frankly, if there is some clarification needed, members are encouraged to ask. If you would, next slide. So housing specifically, what this refers to is if someone is transported, for example, to the district or a station for debriefing. So while in custody, a transgender person will be consulted on where they would feel safest during housing placement. So in, for practical purposes, rather, if you're going to the station, for example, for debriefing, for a brief amount of time, the person would be placed there. Typically, we have a number of separate holding areas anyway. So in that case, that is consistent with the policy. Safety placement shall be documented on the BWC. So BWC, that acronym stands for Body, More Camera. So we're making sure that we're filming from beginning to end with any encounter, especially involving enforcement action. We're going to make sure that with any sort of situation such as this, members' cameras are going to be rolling, for the safety of all involved, to document the encounter for, let me see, any sort of encounter that is not simply a voluntary contact, frankly. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Transgender, intersex, and gender nonconforming individuals shall not be arbitrarily placed in segregated cells solely based on their status. So that should be clear also. So based on status, officers are not placing people separately. That needs to be clarified as well. And so also, while in custody, individuals shall be allowed to use the bathroom that confers with their gender identity. So they get to choose. On to the next slide, please. Okay. So now we're going to talk about the Safe Place Initiative. So this is actually something that we've gotten some exciting awareness on recently, too. So just looking at this program in particular, we have Sergeant Robin Blackman and Sergeant Doug Gibson, who have assisted us with getting a lot of interest from local businesses. So very recently, they went to Everyman Theater, which is not far from here. They also went to Charles Village. They've gone to Handen recently as well, many different communities. We're trying to get as much possible community involvement as possible. Just looking at businesses, what they do, frankly, it's a program where they're able to take a pledge to provide safe harbor, to be a safe place, and assist victims. So if somebody is being harassed, or they think they might have an unsafe situation, we want businesses to get on board, to take a pledge and say, you know, if something's happening, I'm not going to tolerate that. I'm going to call 911. I'm going to assist people. I'm going to be there for them and support them, frankly. So that is exactly what this is. So it goes on to speak on the LGBTQIA+ liaison being notified. So right now, that is Sergeant Robin Blackman, but we are hiring, so we're going to get into that on the next slide. But to continue, we're actually going to have Danny Lawson, who's going to start late in June, at the end of this month. So just focusing on that particular initiative as well, we want to make sure that people know that we are here to protect dignity and respect, and to de-escalate encounters, and to make sure that things go as well as possible, and that we have positive outcomes. If you look at the LGBTQIA+ Policy and Advisory Board, that's actually a part of the consent decree process also. So we're going to be making sure that we're reaching out to as many different communities as possible to get buy-in as well. So we are interested in doing listening sessions, also working with the Pride Center and other organizations, too. And if you look at Pride at BPD, that's our last initiative that you have right there. So that is actually something that is an internal employee resource group. That's actually something that Major Jonathan Amy created along with our Equity Director, Leslie Parker Plyther. So it actually has 10 members in BPD as well at this time. So we're trying to foster a safe, inclusive, and empowering space, also to include belonging as well for BPD's LGBTQIA+ employees. And if you actually look at our website, we're also encouraging members of this community in order to reach out for hiring as well, because we are hiring. If you look at cross-collaboration with the Community Partnership Unit, our Community Partnership Unit actually encompasses the liaisons, of course. That's going to include Danny Lawson. It's also going to include a number of different initiatives, too, to include that advisory board, which we are standing up. So in summary, that is most of what I have for that slide. If we can continue on to the next one. All right. So we're talking about Everyman Theater. Recently, we had our supervisors go over there, along with Amanda Crockey, who is our Community Partnerships Manager over there. She actually was able to get some additional sign-ups, and that's something that we want to do. We want to encourage as much participation from all over the city as possible. So if you have anyone who's interested in being a part of this initiative, we encourage participation, and absolutely, we want more people to be a part of it. We do have Pride Week, of course, coming. You have events all the way through the 9th through the 15th. There's going to be a parade. And I remember last year, starting on Charles Street, going down to North Avenue. We want to make sure it's a safe event for everybody. So we're also going to have recruitment participate as possible. And then we're also going to be out there with multiple different officers, making sure that there is a deployment in place to make sure that everyone's safe. All right, continue. All right. And that is actually going to be our last slide. So that is all I have for my presentation.
Perfect. Thank you so, so much. I definitely see a change in Baltimore City Police Department, particularly with this Pride initiative, so I just want to commend you all as well. Next, we'll go over Agency Reports. Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
We support the endeavor, and we're open to any questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Health Department?
Good morning, everyone. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs, Baltimore City Health Department. And I did just want to ask a clarifying question. I was in the restroom for the very beginning. Are we just speaking to our reports about the well-being of trans Baltimoreans? Or should we speak to all three reports for the bills?
No. So we're going to be having three separate hearings. So if you could just speak to transgender well-being, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was sharing the right information. So you all have our agency report, but for those who may have not seen it, I just want to share that the City Health Department appreciates you paying attention to the well-being of trans folks. We do, of course, serve everyone, and I say this not to discount the experiences of the trans community, but to emphasize that everyone, regardless of identity, may use our programs and services, assuming, of course, they qualify for the particular program or service that they are seeking. That said, there are certain health outcomes that trans folks are more likely to experience. Similarly, to men who have sex with men, trans individuals are more likely to be at risk for HIV and other sexually transmitted infections than the general population. And just to share a stat, in Baltimore City, an estimated 6% of individuals newly infected with HIV in 2023 identified themselves as being gender diverse. And data show that trans people who are living with HIV are less likely to receive treatment, and less likely to be retained in care than cisgender people living with HIV. I also just want to note that, of course, trans folks and men who have sex with men are not the only people at risk for HIV and STIs. And I say that because I know that there can be stigma and preconceived notions around who gets HIV, and I just want to make sure that we're naming and dispelling that. So of course, you all know, we offer several programs and services aimed at reducing the incidence of HIV and STIs, and we have our assistant commissioners who oversee our bureaus of clinical services and HIV prevention, and Ryan White and Community Risk Reduction Services here today, and they're happy to speak to any, you know, questions you have about those services. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here, and we stand by our favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The Baltimore City Police Department?
Kara Ashburn, on behalf of the Baltimore City Police Department, we stand behind our favorable bill report.
Perfect. Baltimore City Public Schools?
Good morning. Melissa Broome, Legislative Affairs. For city schools, we stand by our agency report and are happy to answer any questions.
Sure. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services?
Lakeisha Williams from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We stand by our report as well, and we're happy to provide any data if needed.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Department of Social Services? One last time, Department of Social Services? All right. Next, we're going to go into public testimony. Oh, I'm sorry, Department of Finance?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Gabriel. I work for the Department of Finance as their legislative liaison, and we're here to support the committee in any way, and we stand by our bill report.
Thank you so much. And colleagues, just for procedural purposes, I wanted to have public testimony before we ask our questions. This provides an opportunity for the public to kind of share what they are experiencing within the community, and ask any questions of agencies. For those that are providing public testimony, we are only accepting in-person testimony at this time because of technical difficulties, and you will have two minutes to provide your testimony for this particular bill. Keep in mind that we do have two additional, yes, two additional bills after this, and so please just focus on the transgender well-being testimony for this particular public testimony. All right. First and foremost, we have Mr. or Mrs. Torres? Mr. Torres? Yes.
Hello. Can you hear me all right? Hi. My name is Tika Torres. I use he/him pronouns. I am a resident of Darley Park for like four years now. I'm very proud of that. I also chair the LGBTQIA Commission. So I just wanted to say, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. The Mayor's Office already has an advisory board. We've been working together for a while now. But just personally, as a resident, as a trans Latino, I just wanted to say that I'm very scared. I'm scared to go out. I am a US citizen born, I'm a second-generation citizen, and again, I'm very scared. I work in the city as a policy advisor for Planned Parenthood in Maryland. Work is hard. It's hard to walk in and have people call you a murderer daily, but I'm very passionate about my work. A lot of our patients are trans, non-binary. They need our services, but they also need to feel safe coming into the clinic. Yeah, just wanted you to know that, and I also wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Torres. And I just want to applaud you for showing up today. We, all on this council, we realize that this is a very scary and unprecedented times in these United States, and I will tell you, and I'm probably speaking very frankly for those on the council, we will protect you. We definitely have a space in not only our policy where we prioritize everyone, and we also create resources and opportunities for you all as well. So thank you so much for your service in Baltimore City, and thank you so much for having the courage to come today, because it's in moments like this of resistance that we have to keep showing up, and we have to keep surrounding each other regardless of what is happening at the national level. So thank you so much.
Yes, again, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to testify? Yes. Please state your name, and then you have two minutes to testify. And if, and I'm sorry, ma'am, if you could turn on the mic, press the little button.
Do I hold it? No. Good morning, everyone. Aya Damon, CEO of Merlin Safe Haven. First, I would like to thank the Chair. I would like to thank Mark Carnway and Public Health Environmental Committee. I support the Resolution 250015R, the well-being of Baltimore transgender community. I favor this Scott administration for its efforts put forward in every agency that works to create equitable, equal initiatives from day one of Scott's administration taking office. No other mayor before has took these steps as this administration has. Housing initiatives for LGBTQ folks were unknown until he took office. Special thanks to Councilmember Christopher Barnett for being the first person bringing this hearing to fruitation when it was most needed. Merlin Safe Haven is the only direct-service provider and housing program for LGBTQ folks in the entire state of Maryland, also with a chapter in Washington, DC. Places I want to ask for support. Sorry, friends, before I do it, I have to say these things. The city turned Merlin into a sanctuary, not just the governor, but also you too, Zeke. There's no formal plan of what that looks like. As the longstanding organization that provides housing, direct services, we need a plan. What does that look like? Were people fleeing to Merlin for help, refugees? We have people who are saying, dropping their children off at our front door. This took our call volumes and emails to 2,000-plus. There's nothing we can do. I want to also shed a light on, there is also no data that we can get from MOHS. Friends, again, sorry, but I have to bring this up. I will be doing myself a due diligence of not doing the work for folks. There's no data that tells us about LGBTQ folks that's in our housing system. The programs that you all are supporting today from COC and the MOHS, we have one client that is LGBTQ in the entire program. Competitive grants, folks, we have one client in a direct services program for LGBTQ folks today.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. All righty now. So with that being said, I wanted to speak on that. BPD, I like you for being performative, but we need more help from you all. Grade you an F. This is performative at its best. I need for you to support us. I engaged with you all, and I was everything, but she, I was he. This is a scary time for us as these bills are coming out. I want you all to understand that we need your support. You all have done an amazing job. I am not targeting anyone. I am learning as I do this work. Dear God, I have never been so afraid in my life, and I'm one of the loudest in the room, and at this moment, I am afraid for the safety. So if you all could continue this, and we can have a conversation about what a plan looks like for a sanctuary, Health Department, I give you an A+. Council members, thank you so much. F again, BPD.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other in-person? Yes.
I'm Renee Lau, Maryland Safe Haven. I just want to share a little story. Four years ago, I was homeless, and I was in the Russell Street Shelter, and I had to live adult life. In the shelter, I could not identify as a female. I had to identify as a male. That needs to change. And one of those things that needs, that I found out recently, and Councilperson Ramos just assured me, is last year, it was brought up that eight years ago, it was passed by this council, a citywide ID. And last year, she had to bring it up as to why it had laid dormant for eight years. Now I understand there's money in the budget to have that implemented. That would not only help the entire transgender community, it would help the Police Department to identify genders. It would help the shelters identify who is trans, who is not trans. These are the things that need to be addressed all the time. In our current political climate, we are all scared. I just got an email this morning about someone who wants to cancel being a vendor at Trans Pride because she's afraid of her safety. I mean, I was just sitting there reading the email. That should not be necessary. We are a community, and the transgender community, especially in Merlin Safe Haven, even though we identify as an LGBTQ+ organization, we are a community organization who services the entire community, especially our harm reduction teams. We need your support, and I support your bill, and we need you now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for consistently showing up as well. I've noticed you, sorry. Thank you for consistently showing up. Thank you. All right, colleagues, I'll turn it over to you all for questions. I'll start with the Council President.
One more person?
Oh, is there one more person? Oh, is there one more person? Oh, yes. Yes, we'll do. I'm gonna do it. Thank you. And I'm sorry, maybe if you could turn on the mic? If you could turn on the mic? Gabriel?
Good afternoon. My name is London Sentharishalu. I'm the former director of the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs, and I appreciate the intent of this bill to improve the well-being of transgender community in Baltimore by fostering collaboration among the key city agencies. It addresses our anti-intrusion of stigma and violence and all that other kind of stuff. But my question is, is this for outcomes or is this for optics? And that seems to be what has been the ongoing systematic thing that's been going on with this council, with the mayor's offices, and a lot of the work has been performative. It has not been based in sufficient outcomes. So however, my main concerns center around where is the funding allocated? How is the effectiveness of these efforts will be measured? It is vital that we move beyond optics and mere discussions and ensure the tangible outcomes are achieved for the community. So questions on clarification and action. One is funding transparency and allocation. Can the city provide a clear budget breakdown for the programs and services outlined in this bill? Are there dedicated funds for community-led initiatives, mental health services, housing, and employment support for transgender individuals? Two would be the outcome metrics and accountability. What specific metrics will be used to assess the success of these efforts? How will progress be measured in reducing violence, stigma, and improving overall well-being? Will there be regular reporting to the community and stakeholders on these outcomes? Sustainable investment, right? So everyone talks about what's going on with Trump, with Trump changes and the Trump administration. But community is resilient. And one thing about community is that we've created grass-led movements that have created sustainability. So everyone is saying, everyone has a fear of what's going to happen within the next three years. But this is the time to mobilize and to make an action plan that is actionable and not just performative. So how will the city ensure that these resources are equitably distributed and reach the most vulnerable members of community? Four would be community engagement input. Will there be opportunities for transgender community members and advocacy groups to have a direct say in how funds are used and programs are developed? So I urge the city to prioritize accountability and ensure that investments translate into meaningful improvements in the lives of transgender individuals. One of the things that I was able to negotiate as Director of LGBTQ Affairs and spoke on was, one, around what's going on with the disparity report. And to assist with the procurement process for LGBTQ community, I worked with Councilwoman Odette Ramos on a Mary's Law. And one of the pieces of that was we were not able to fully flourish that out because we needed a more accurate disparity report with the law department. So within seven years, the disparity report has zero LGBTQ businesses listed. And working with, I was able to work with the LGBTQ Chamber of Carmos, okay, the LGBTQ Chamber of Carmos, to get that out. And it's not been any changes. There was also $270,000 that I got allocated to our office. Where is the $270,000 that came, that was allotted from budget negotiations that were supposed to go to the Office of LGBTQ Affairs that went to me being able to hire the current interim? But how, where is that money? Whatever happened to it? So thank you so much, and I do support this bill, but with those amendments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you bring up, you bring up great data points that we can, no, you're good. You bring up great data points that, two of them, I want to make official committee requests. We can get an update on the disparities report and send to the council. And then number two, procurement opportunities that were mentioned.
What is the specific request there with the procurement opportunities?
Yeah, so you mentioned one.
City buys. So city buys, so for, basically in city buys, you know how there was identifiers in city buys? You know, you put like LGBT, you can put gay, lesbian, transgender as identifiers in the disparity report. I'm sorry, in the city buys, I think there was a concern with how people were able to identify with city buys. Just clarity, if there is a identifier for trans, gay, lesbian, and how that is being, with the metric for that, right? Like, are they being quantified?
Yeah, so Talor, if there is an identifier for LGBTQ in city buys, if we can get a answer to that, that would be great.
So to determine what? Like if we're procuring, if we're procuring from LGBTQ, like business owners?
That is correct, yep. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first thank Tika and Aya and Keith and London and all the folks who were Alexis, all the folks who were brave enough to show up and testify today. Let me also thank our agencies for the work that they're doing, the Scott administration. Look, this council is crystal clear that we are not going to walk back any of our commitments to any of our communities. We know this is a moment of fear across the country. We've seen other cities and states walk back their commitments to Pride, walk back their commitments to LGBTQ communities. We're seeing it all over the place. And I think it's important to acknowledge a few things. One is that, to Aya's point, Baltimore is a welcoming city. We are welcoming to all people, and we are deeply appreciative of the partnership that we've had with Safe Haven when it comes to supporting particularly housing for our trans young people. Aya was the first person in the state of Maryland doing that work way before it became a thing in the national media. And I will forever be grateful to that commitment. And to your point, we are proud that Baltimore is a welcoming place, that Maryland is a welcoming state. And to your other point, we know that folks are going to come here from all over the country and are going to need support and services. And I remember working with the chair on some previous legislation right around budget time having to do with women's maternal health and access to reproductive health. And this was right before the Supreme Court made their decision to restrict access to abortion. To your well-made point, we know that folks are going to want to come to Baltimore because it is a place that protects its people. And so we are going to need to double down on building that infrastructure, making sure folks have the services that they need, folks have housing. And I want to also thank Tika for your leadership on the LGBTQ Commission. I would say that is one of the commissions, I think, to your exchange with BPD that has not always gotten enough love in our city, that sometimes gets a little pushed to the side. And I think if we're going to be very serious about upholding our commitment to equity, that commission needs to be centered in the work that we do. I have seen BPD come a long ways. I am going to credit the commissioner and the work that you all are doing, and there is still a long way to go, obviously. But I just want to say that for this council, for our former colleague, Councilman Burnett, who now works in OECD, we are ten toes down, crystal clear. And I appreciate the chair bringing this, these set of hearings during Pride Month because the message could not be more clear. The Baltimore City Council supports all of our communities. And in this moment of fear and anxiety, we still see you, we still love you. We are not going to turn our backs on anyone that chooses to make Baltimore its home. So just appreciate everyone for coming out, holding this hearing. And do want to lift up London's points about the need for clearer data, stronger systems within procurement, and just making sure that we are doing the things we say we're doing. And I hope that folks know you've got, this council has your back, and will continue to have your back. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'll start off this first round of questions. Colleagues, given that we have additional hearings after this one, I'm going to allow one question, and then we'll move on to the next set of hearings. And I also, for procedure, just want to acknowledge Councilman John Bullock. Thank you so much for joining us today. I want to start with the Health Department. One of the major issues that I've been seeing is gender-affirming care. And it's something that is really, really important, particularly in the hospital setting. And so just wanted to see what the dynamic is or policies or standards that are currently in place to ensure equitable access to comprehensive care for all. That doesn't have to be in an institutional setting or hospital setting, but I'm looking at more of... No. Thank you. So I'm looking for any type of procedures within the Health Department that we are specifically requiring additional training to address biases within our departmental settings to increase inclusivity for all persons that are within the Health Department.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure I understand your question because you mentioned gender-affirming care, but then you also mentioned the bias training?
Yeah, so gender-affirming care, what I'm focused on is making sure that from a Health Department perspective, we are supporting our institutions for gender-affirming care. And so that can be anything from partnerships with our hospital institutions, talking to them about making sure that we prioritize and/or support transgender patients. And so what are we doing as a Health Department to ensure that that's happening in the healthcare space in Baltimore City?
Sure, thank you. So I'll actually kick it to Dr. Greenbaum.
Okay, perfect.
Hello, Adina Greenbaum, Assistant Commissioner for Clinical Services and HIV and STI Prevention at the Health Department. Thank you very much for that question. We do have trainings for our staff who provide our direct clinical services at the Health Department in terms of reducing bias, implicit bias, stigma. And our hope is to, that we're providing a service that is welcoming to anyone who would come and seek our services. I think we can get back to you in terms of what we do for some of our external partners, whether activities are happening through organizations, through gatherings such as the Elhick in terms of the support and communication with other clinical providers in the city.
No. Oh, go ahead.
I am in agreement with what Dr. Greenbaum just mentioned. I'm Lynn Ferrari with the Ryan White Program. We support the hospitals and universities in Maryland by providing Ryan White services and ensure that as part of our standards of care, we include cultural competence.
Do we have a specific quantity or number of how many of our partners actually go through that training? Is it mandated for all of our partners?
Yeah, that's a great question, and we would have to get back to you with that information.
Okay, perfect. And Talor, if we can make that an official committee request? So the request would be how many of our partners from the City Health Department go through, go through the cultural bias training that you just mentioned? From the Health Department? And if we can do that for the last fiscal year, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you calling us, especially given Pride Month, Pride Week. Happy Pride, everybody. You know, I think what is normally a pretty joyous occasion and will be, I'm sure, this weekend, it takes a little bit of a hit, I think, with all that's going on in DC. And please know that you, as the president said earlier, have the unquestioned support of this council. I would speak for the mayor and say this mayor as well. And I agree, London, you know, we absolutely do not want to be performative here. We want to be very thoughtful, especially at a time like this where every decision matters, every dollar matters. And true accountability means that we need to be asking the right questions about outcomes. So I really appreciate that comment. And if you couldn't tell, I was shaking my head feverishly the entire time. So I wanted to ask, to that effect, that question. Do we know what the impacts of federal cuts freezes and otherwise and proposed cuts at the federal level to Medicaid and otherwise, what that may mean to our trans folks and folks that may rely on those resources? Do we have any sense of that? And I think for the councils, we think about those pieces. You know, I think it's important for us to consider where we might be able to be helpful. So are we able to answer that question?
I do know that we have did an assessment of our, a lot of our community stakeholders, nonprofit organizations that do receive federal funding, and the number is over $1 million that has been cut or frozen for the upcoming fiscal year. And that's through three to four different agencies.
Wow, so over $1 billion across...
Over $1 million, across different agencies, yes.
Agencies in Baltimore City?
In Baltimore City, yes. One agency lost maybe $200,000 and something thousand dollars. No, I think it was almost $300,000 from Free State. So it's been a lot of cutting and freezing of fundings until they figure out, even stuff that has been earmarked and approved has been frozen. So there is a very heightened concern at the health of the community right now and the services that are going to be provided.
I think to that effect, it would be helpful. If we have any list of that, that would be really helpful. I think for, for us, the council, as we think about these issues, I think to London's point earlier, we need to be thinking about outcomes and how those funds lead toward the outcomes that support our folks out in the city. So if you could provide that, that'd be really helpful. I'll, you know, provide that as an official committee request.
What is the request?
This is a request of any federal funds that have been cut or frozen or we anticipate not being there whenever the next budget is passed at the federal level that we should be accounting for. And so I want to know the funds and what they were geared towards supporting for our LGBTQ-plus community.
Specifically, city dollars, right? We can't account for external organizations?
If you know external organizations, that would be helpful. But I'm, I think that's a pretty tall task for you to anticipate what grants are not going to nonprofits across the city. But if we have it, it would definitely be helpful.
Got it.
And the reason why I asked that question is because when we start to see things that we've been working on for decades begin to fall apart, and we start to see people in difficult situations, this is going to be why. And I think we want to do as much as we can as possible as a council to anticipate those challenges and step in where we can. So thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing this up. This is a super important meeting, definitely an important time to do so, and I'm glad you brought it up.
Thank you so much. Director, when is the next LGBTQ commission meeting?
Next month. We just had it yesterday.
Okay.
So it happens the first, I want to say Tuesday, second Tuesday of every month.
Okay. I'd love, Talor, I'd love, I'd love if we can present these official committee requests, if there can be a partnership with this commission to present out during that next commission meeting, if not for like five, 10 minutes, so we can begin to talk about. So London, this actually provides an opportunity for continuity of what you just described so that we are reporting out for accountability measures. And then, Aya, that allows for organizations in the community to not only know what's happening, they know where the funding's happening, but then, Councilman, to your point, to know where the gaps are as well. So we can begin planning, we can begin adding that source of accountability and strategic planning to that commission.
Okay. So you're saying, once we can pile this information to share it with the commission as well?
Yes, that's correct.
In addition to Senator Beck's?
Yeah. And so if you could make sure that we have that next invitation so that myself or a partner within this Public Health Committee can go and talk about these official committee requests so that we can begin the process of strategic planning, which so many of the community brought up today? which so many of the community brought up today.
Okay, I can forward you all the links today.
Okay, cool, thank you so much.
Not a problem.
All right, any other questions, colleagues, before we move on? All right, hearing and seeing none. We're going to move, we're going to actually put this hearing in recess and then move towards the next resolution. So Council Resolution 25-0020R for the purpose of inviting the mayor's office, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department and Baltimore City Public Schools, the mayor's office of homeless services, mayor's office of employment development, the mayor's office of LGBTQ affairs, the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights and the Baltimore City Department of Social Services to, to our council to provide an update on the general well-being of gay and lesbian, gay men and lesbian women in the city of Baltimore. We're going to first go through any reports that we have. Any comments from the Office of LGBTQ Affairs?
No, the same staff is the same for all of our constituents. We don't have any specified data on just gay men.
Okay, perfect. We'll next go to the health department?
Good morning again, everyone. We stand by our favorable bill report and we are happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. The Baltimore City Police Department?
Karen Ashburn again for the Baltimore City Police Department. We stand behind our favorable bill report and are happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Baltimore City Public Schools?
Melissa Broom, City Schools Legislative Affairs. We stand by our agency report and are on hand for questions.
Thank you. MOHS?
Good morning, Lakeisha Williams. We stand by our agency report as well and available for any extra data or questions.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Zachary Roman, Equity Policy and Civil Rights. OECR supports the intention of the informational hearing of 25-0020R. The office stands by its favorable report and stands behind the gay community of Baltimore. As mentioned before, the office would like to highlight our report to the public as a way to access the information on the services that we mentioned in our presentation during the previous hearing. And we are happy to answer any questions the community may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Tracy Eastup for the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement. We stand by our favorable report and are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. So colleagues, similar to the last bill hearing, we are going to go into public testimony. For those that are providing public testimony, we are only accepting in-person testimony today. You have two minutes to provide official testimony. And then, from there, we'll go into questions from my colleagues. We have Keith Holt? And I'm sorry, sir, if you could turn on the mic? Thank you.
Okay, I think I got it. Take it a little bit away in case I get a little loud, in a good way. But first, I want to say thank you, Honorable Members of City Council for granting me this moment, not just to speak for myself, but for those lost in the shadows. No battle has ever been won without the help of allies, from slavery to the Holocaust. You can't hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me better? Okay, once again, can we start that time? I thank you, Honorable Members of City Council, for granting me this moment, not just to speak for myself, but for those lost in the shadows. No battle in history has ever been won without the assistance of allies, from slavery to the Holocaust, to unwomen rights, to civil rights. It was allies who held power, who saw injustice and amplified oppressed voices to make change happen. So I honor you all. Chair Porter, your leadership and movement to ensure all subgroups are taken care of during these times speak highly of your character. So I say this in front of all my peers, officials, both elected and appointed. Thank you. And also, Dr. Greenbaum, I'm so happy to see you today as well. Great partner in our community. Enduring pride, we celebrate the resilience and love. But this June, hours into Pride Month, during Philadelphia's commemoration in the gay neighborhood, Darwin Matthews Jr., a 31-year-old black gay man, was shot and murdered in a space that should have been safe. His death was met with silence from the broader public because I guess another black man gone. However, we may, so this shows, we may be one big group. However, we are so many different subgroups in our community. So that speaks for the need for our movement and resources, which is why this hearing today is so important. But of course, this silence is not new. Violence against gay men, particularly black gay men, is often met with indifference. Our allies are rarely counted as hate crimes. Our suffering unnamed, our stories untold. Nationally, the Trump administration, recent actions have rescinded critical protections against discrimination in healthcare and education. Our language had been stripped from federal websites and more than $300 million in federal funding for Maryland's health department programs. Funding directly supported HIV prevention, treatment, and mental health services for our most vulnerable are now slashed. Maryland ranks third in the nation for those living with HIV and 10th of those new diagnoses. In 2021, 20% of new cases statewide was amongst youth 18 to 24, with black and gay males unfortunately leading the pack. We also see 50% of LGBTQ youth in Maryland report symptoms of anxiety and 40% have seriously considered suicide, drug overdoses in Baltimore. Cases rose within the last year and continue to rise as we see 1,074 lives lost and counting. Many of them gay men, self-medicating against a world that many feel we do not belong. Yet, we have nonprofits doing the work directly and are not being funded. We need to open this up to disseminate funding effectively for those who turn that pain into action. We are more than your hairdressers, your style coaches, and your turnout partners. We are fathers, we are brothers, we are sons, we are nephews, and we are your friends. We are the heartbeat of this city and our hearts are breaking. So I call on you, our allies, our neighbors, and our legislative body. If you love, like, or even care for a member of our community, this is the time to stand up. We need more than your tolerance, we need action. My hope from this hearing is that HIV funding is examined and possibly restored, affirming spaces for all created, creation of LGBTQ plus liaisons in our major city agencies, including MoED and DOT, et cetera, community-selected leadership in the Office of LGBTQ Affairs, rental assistance with community trusted organizations in the city, homeownership and employment assistance, business assistance for those who face challenges during this federal climate. Maryland has historically been praised. Okay. Maryland has historically been praised as a state for LGBTQ folks and their family to work, live, and drive. We expect to see an increase of folks seeking refuge from rare states. Hateful attacks and murders of our slain brothers and sisters need to be pursued as hate crimes. Also overlook, and also relook at our non-discrimination employment laws. Maryland is a state that does not allow discrimination based on gender or sexual orientation. Yet, we are also an at-will state. So basically, a person can be fired for any reason at any time, including their identity or their orientation, as long as it's not listed on paper. We need to look at that.
In 10 seconds.
Okay. We need you to see us, to fight for us, to love us openly and fiercely. We need you to ensure that Baltimore government looks like the city is served with our voices leading the way. Let us not be lost to one another. Let us gather, let us heal, let us dream, and allow another day to come. We are black, we are LGBTQ plus, we are Baltimore-born and raised, and we will not be erased. Happy Pride.
Thank you so much, Mr. Holt. Renee? I'm sorry, no, no, you're not next, ma'am. No, it's Renee. Wow. Oh, you just signed the wrong sheet. Did Aya do the same? Okay, London?
Good evening again, council. Again, thank you all for your advocacy and being allies. I greatly appreciate all the work that you all have been doing consistently. But again, I have some questions and concerns. Thanks again, Adina, for all your work with the health department over the years. You have gone above and beyond. I really appreciate the things that you've done with the health department. So as a former director, I have firsthand progress in helping to improve the health system. So one thing, including achieving a perfect score in the municipal indexes and establishing vital partnerships with organizations like Sage, which helped advance our community's well-being. I also worked diligently with the police department on our consent decree and ensuring accountability and improved relations and have still been working on the consent decree afterwards. But one of the main focuses and one of my main issues of concern has been around the lack of adequate funding for HIV and AIDS. HIV and AIDS remains a critical public health issue. It is not a gay disease. It affects everyone, regardless of sexual orientation or race. The funding for HIV and AIDS programs has historically been underfunded, especially for communities of color, leaving many without access to testing, prevention, treatment, and services. And this is where we run the intersectionalities of gay, lesbian, and trans community that are often left out of discussions around, I'm sorry, cis-hetero communities that are left out of the conversation around PrEP. PrEP is not just for LGBTQ community. People who are LGBTQ, you know, engage in activities with everyone. We are a microcosm of the larger world. So the other question or concern I have is around monkeypox. So the recent monkeypox outbreak highlights the urgent need for sustained investment in infectious disease prevention and response. Under my tutelage, we were able to provide a partnership with Nomi Health that was crucial, that helped us to keep our monkeypox numbers down. We were able to eradicate the city from having an epidemic. I wanted to know what has happened with that partnership with Nomi Health? Is that partnership still there? What things are happening around monkeypox? Are we still utilizing some of our social media apparatuses like Grindr and Plenty of Fish and some of the other social apparatuses to get information out? The other thing is the overemphasis on, okay, there's an overemphasis on COVID-19 at the expense of other diseases. While COVID-19 understandably receives significant attention, other critical issues such as HIV, monkeypox, and broader health disparities must not be neglected. These issues are interconnected and require ongoing attention and funding and systematic solutions.
Thank you so much. Would you like to respond?
Sorry, just a lot of excellent points brought up. So just gathering my thoughts of hitting all of them or most of them for responses. And we can certainly flesh out our responses to all of those afterwards. But I agree that, agree with the excellent points made that I'm looking at overall of sexual health and wellness, whether it's HIV, syphilis, MPOX, that this balance between recognizing the disparities in LGBTQ communities and also, at the same time, holding that these diseases can affect anyone. It's not just specific to any one group. So balancing those two things together and making sure that we do our due diligence of addressing the disparities where they exist and making sure that everyone understands that these conditions can affect anyone and can affect anyone directly or indirectly because of the intermixing of how our communities work. There is ongoing work at the health department in all of these, in all of these areas, and we're happy to provide more details on those.
Thank you so much, Dr. Greenbaum. And an official committee request, if we can provide an update on the chronic health diseases or even like infectious health diseases that are experienced by gay men, I will lean on your professional expertise to provide a list of those and the data points with regard to how many cases we have in the city and what we're doing to address those infectious diseases in gay men in Baltimore.
And just for clarification, the request is for specific disease?
Specific diseases. So I'm looking for data points. So particularly data points, excuse me, particularly data points of current snapshots of the disease within Baltimore City. So I'm going to lean on your expertise to give me like top five, top seven, so that at the next LGBTQ Affairs Commission meeting, we are able to kind of go through those infectious diseases, provide those data points, and share what the city is doing, what the city health department is doing in relation to those infectious diseases.
Thank you.
You got that, Talor? All right, cool. We also have Keisha Howard? Okay, perfect, no worries. All right, colleagues, I'm going to allow, again, one question if you have for this particular hearing related to gay men. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Madam Chair. I'm going to cheat a little bit and ask a broader question. And I'm going to follow up with your question regarding training. And I want to specifically focus on the police department and how they sort of manage training for these sort of situations and sensitivity and how to not make issues worse. Do we have any training during the academy or any training after the academy? One, for folks in the LGBTQ sphere, how to be sensitive, how not to inflame a situation when we have interactions with folks and how to further support folks in our interactions?
So in a word, yes. Major Arnold Jenkins for the Baltimore Police Department. So we do have procedural justice training, which governs neutrality, respect, voice, and trustworthiness. Beyond that as well, we're also focused on policy 317, which is fair and impartial policing. So it actually goes over implicit and explicit bias, implicit being even more damaging because that's the sort of bias you don't know that you may have potentially. So we're training officers to recognize, you know, both explicit and implicit bias, not only themselves, but also the people they work around, also to include members of the community, for example, if you have a caller. So we do educate our officers on this. In 317, the training is actually written specifically in the policy. So on a yearly basis, officers are getting this training, sir.
Yeah, I asked the question because the, in the report, which I really appreciate the report from Equity and Civil Rights and how they broke down different experiences that the LGBTQ community experiences differently, how often they do or don't call the police in instances where they may need them. And each group, and we'll get to the next resolution as well, they all call less than your average bear. And so I think, I'm not sure why that is. And I mean, I have some theories on why that is, but I'm not sure yet what we do about it. And the immediate thought for me, I'm not very creative, is training. Is the training sufficient? Is it applied in instances where there are complaints or repeated complaints for an officer? Does this training happen well before they actually hit the streets? Does this happen in the academy? Are there regular updates? I would tell you, the world has changed dramatically in the last decade when it comes to the LGBTQ plus community. So I think, you know, just, I put that question out there as also an opportunity for reflection internally and always thinking about how we can update those efforts so that we can be more supportive in those non-111 calls. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmen. Any other public testimony for this hearing? All right, hearing and seeing none. We'll go to the next one. And this is the last one. Thank you all so much for combing through. This is something that I think it's a good opportunity to talk about, but I wanted to talk about it in one setting so that we're not having three individual hearings. We can make it all in one swoop. So now we're going to move to Council Resolution 25-0021R for the purpose of inviting representatives of the mayor's office, Baltimore City Health Department, the police department, Baltimore City Public Schools, the mayor's office of homeless services, the mayor's office of LGBTQ affairs, Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and the Baltimore City Department of Social Services to get, to provide an update to the council on the general well-being of lesbian, lesbian women in Baltimore. Excuse me. We're going to move to agency reports. So health department, you'll go first?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. We stand by our favorable report and are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Office of LGBTQ Affairs?
Dear Madam President, we stand by our favorable report and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Zachary Roman, Equity Policy and Civil Rights. We stand by the, I mean, we support the intention behind 25-0021R. The office stands by its favorable report and stands behind the lesbian community of Baltimore. Again, we just want to highlight in our, what's contained within our report, which reflects some of the services and programs that OECR provides, as mentioned in our presentation for 25-0015R. And OECR is happy to answer any questions the community may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Baltimore City Public Schools?
Melissa Broom, City Schools Legislative Affairs. We stand by our agency report and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services?
Good morning again, Lakeisha Williams from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We stand by our data as well and we're here for questions or additional data. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes agency reports. We'll now go into public testimony, again, for procedure. Thank you, again, for procedure. You have two minutes to provide in-person testimony, and then we'll go into questions from colleagues. We have Ms. Keisha Howard?
Good morning, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. First giving honor to God, who is first in my life above all things, and giving honor to everyone who is here today in their respectful places. My name is Elda Keisha Howard, and I am the Mental Health Coordinator for Maryland Safe Haven. I'm elated to be here today because I express as a lesbian woman, and I am excited for any opportunity that's afforded for us to speak about being all-inclusive. In my day-to-day work, especially with Maryland Safe Haven and Baltimore City in general, has been very rewarding in my life because it allows me to work with all people. And the one thing that I love about Maryland Safe Haven is that it is community-based. So all people are welcomed in Baltimore Safe Haven and Maryland Safe Haven. I'd like to thank everyone who's advocating on our behalf. I even thank God for our allies. I thank God for everyone who comes up against us because this is a time for unity in our community, and I think that we will continue to thrive because we have an all-inclusive mindset. One of the things that I'd like to bring to the attention of this committee or group of people today is that the only agency that I've seen work as hard as Ms. Aya, and not saying that all the other ones don't work really hard, is the Health Department. The Health Department has shown up, and I have to give recognition to Baltimore City's Health Department because I work with people who test positive for HIV, who have drug issues, who have problems with alcoholism. I work with individuals who don't understand that their identity does not define who they are and what they are capable of doing. And so I stand firm, and I say that we need to continue to create programming for people who have mental health issues. We can treat drug addicts, we can treat gender dysphoria, we can treat a plethora of things. However, if we don't get to the root of the foundational issues that exist in our communities, then we will not continue to thrive. And so I've pushed Aya, I've pushed Ms. Alexis, and I've pushed all of those who advocate for us to ensure that mental health is not a stigma anymore. I stand firm with a mental health diagnosis that does not stop me from doing the work for the community. And so I'm excited for times like this where we can stand together and say that there is a need to no longer ignore that many people, not just in my community, not those who express themselves as a lesbian, but for all people to seek services that are all-inclusive when it comes to mental health. And so that's why I came here today. That's my portion, and I thank you for hearing.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your courage to come today as well. Really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks for having me.
I'm going to start off the line of questioning. I keep coming back to, I want to target two agencies here with this question. Interpartner violence amongst women, particularly those that express, those that are lesbian, non-binary or queer, is a huge, huge issue that I see and ultimately sometimes goes pretty much unreported. We are seeing in our community, what are we doing or what trainings are we doing to not only highlight interpartner violence, but provide those mental health and coping opportunities for, for women, for women in our community? And so that's for the Health Department, but then I also want to come over to the Police Department for the second half of my question.
Sure. Thank you so much, and I'm really glad you brought that up. That's actually something that we highlighted in our agency report as well. And I do just want to note, for those who might not be aware, not only lesbian women, but also bisexual women experience higher rates of intimate partner violence than the general population, and actually bisexual women experience the highest rates of IPV. So one program that I just kind of want to shout out, we don't have representation from them here today, but it's our You Choose program, oh, sorry, our You Choose program, and they work in community settings, in city schools, to teach healthy relationship skills so that young people can understand what is a healthy relationship, how can I make sure that I am in a healthy relationship, and, you know, set boundaries and make decisions that are good for me. So that's really the sort of overlap between IPV and the programming that we do. And then I would really defer to, I know, or I should say, I believe, Monsi has some programming as well, and of course you mentioned BPD, and then for the mental health piece, I would defer to our partners at BHSP, who serve as the local behavioral health authority for Baltimore City.
Thank you. No, that's, that's very helpful, and I'm glad to know the programs. What I want to kind of drill down on is, how does that translate to the community? So I know you all do those types of trainings in-house, you provide, you know, trainings within the Health Department. Are those trainings, are those trainings shared with community outside of the YouTube channel? Are they, yes?
I, sorry, I must have not been speaking clearly. It's a program called You Choose. It is, it's a program in the community. We implement it in community settings and in city schools.
Okay, thank you so much. That made, I heard YouTube, and I was like, okay, YouTube is cool, but how is it going out? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And I want to transition over to the Baltimore City Police Department. When those types of instances are reported, one, how are you all treating those types of situations with sensitivity? And number two, are you all working with the Equity Officer within BPD to kind of document those types of interactions, but also provide those necessary coping strategies that were shared with the Health Department? How are you all intertwining those inter-agency collaborations to address the issue?
Good morning, everyone. Arnold Jenkins, Baltimore Police Department. So regarding that specific question, if you look at some of the different resources that we have, we do work with Turnaround, the House of Ruth, we also have a Victim Services team as well. Regarding the Equity section specifically, they do focus on pulling data, they do have analysts who can look at some of that as well. Specifically for that group, we also have a Hate Crimes Liaison. So they are the point of contact, point of reference. They do aggregate those on a monthly basis to keep track of what's going on. Specifically for investigations, if the incident is specific to such as, for example, an aggravated assault, that would be of the District Detective Unit who handles that. If it's intimate partner violence, serious incident would go to our Intimate Partner Violence Unit, for example.
Are we able to parse out that data? You mentioned two major data reporting identifiers that usually Chairman Conway looks at with his legislative oversight hearings from BPD. Are you able to parse out that information? Are you able to parse out that data a little bit more so that we could have a perspective of how this is intently, how this is intently impacting this community?
So yes, to a degree, just for confidentiality purposes. So Sergeant Robin Blackman is currently our Hate Crimes Liaison. She would also handle incidents, including the LGBTQIA+ community as well. On a regular basis, she produces an Excel sheet based off of the incident reports that we have. So currently this year, for the entire community, that would be three incidents. So the only reason I'm not providing you further information on that is because it might be potentially identifying if I get more detail.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
No problem.
Colleagues, did you have any more questions?
You know, I got questions. I'm curious, so one, I'll say this, and I appreciate you, Madam Chair, for breaking these out into, I think, three separate resolutions, because I think in the reports and certainly in the conversation that we're having here, there appear to be different issues in different parts of the communities that can be highlighted. I've noted some of the issues around HIV and STDs in our gay male population, I noted some of the violence issues within our lesbian population, and a plethora of issues for our trans population. So I, seeing it this way has actually helped me to understand some of the unique challenges across the community, but even more, it makes me sort of beg, beg the question, and I think this is a question for you, Alexis, how, how we talk about our progress in these respective communities and begin to track our progress in these respective communities. I don't know if we have a report that we currently put out yearly or something like that, that might give us some insight on, you know, because I think, you know, for the lesbian community, the intimate partner violence and the violence generally issues, I feel like it's a pretty tricky issue, and we're going to have to dig deep to understand some of the seeds that lead to that problem being more prominent amongst our lesbian community. I think, you know, our approaches to STDs and our gay male community, I think likewise, it's different, it depends on the disease. HIV has been, you know, the clarion call for decades now. But I'm curious, do we have a report that we put out? If not, I would recommend that we consider doing something like that.
So we annually do a report from our commission, and I do quarterly reports for the Office of, oh my goodness, where we do our metrics, so programming and stuff like that. So we do do reports to them quarterly, and we have certain design metrics that we are supposed to be hitting. However, there are some things that we do take into account ourselves. I have been trying to do more reports on housing initiatives or places for people to be at for housing. So we do have quarterly reports according to our metrics, but then we have a yearly report done by our commission on initiatives that we as a community and community members have come up with that are outside of the mayor's pillars. So we do have two separate reports that we can present out to you all.
That's great. I appreciate it. I look forward to seeing those reports.
No problem.
I think that that's the only sort of question I had there, you know, in thinking about how we operationalize and make changes to what we do and what we prioritize, especially given the current situation in Washington, I, you know, I want to keep mind of some of the things we know are problems, and I, once again, really appreciate the opportunity to break these out and talk through them separately. I, I think with that in mind, I'm curious how much of the report tackles these particular issues in each of these communities.
I think the issue that this office has had is that this office doesn't provide that back services. We partner with a lot of different agencies to provide the service, and we have to rely on other agencies to compose data or give us back information. I think that that needs to be expanded in order for us to effectively be able to help the community, to be honest.
Yeah. I don't think that's, not necessarily a problem, that you guys don't deliver the services. Sometimes the Mayor's Office is just a connector, and, you know, there's a number of nonprofits, but to that effect, you know, knowing how the resources that exist out there with our partners, and if they are sufficient to address what we know to be the problems in our communities, you know, I think the Mayor's Office is often able to pull together those disparate data insights. And so, yeah, you know, I look, really appreciate you guys. You know, I'm here to be a partner, here to support, and I know it's a tough time right now, but, but we can get through this together, so.
Thank you. We appreciate all of your support as well.
And just to follow up on that, you know, when we're talking about OPI and some of those data metrics that they are reporting out, I would love to see, like the Councilman was saying, those types of reporting mechanisms, maybe on a quarterly basis to the Council. I fully expect to have a subsequent hearing as a follow-up to this hearing, maybe in six months, maybe in a year. I haven't quite thought through that, you know, that like cadence yet, but there will be a follow-up. I just want to make sure that when we come back to this committee, we have those types of data that you need to address some of these kind of granular issues that we are seeing in community. So thank you so much. Colleagues, just want to ask last call for any other questions? All right. Thank you all so much for coming today. Kind of a method to my madness, and I actually will be amending this bill a little bit because, Julia, you actually educated me a little bit more to add additional language related to the populations and the audiences that we serve. So this bill will actually be amended to include those populations that, upon education, I just missed. So I definitely do appreciate that, that awareness. This is an opportunity for us to really come together as, you know, Baltimore, to really focus on these issues, but also focus on the granular nature of these issues. The LGBTQ+, the LGBTQIA+ community is not a monolith. It is individual communities that go through separate issues, they go through issues that affect their communities very different, whether it be from a racial perspective, a socioeconomic perspective, or even just a regional and cultural perspective. And we have to be sensitive to that if we're ever going to make change within this community. And so the reason why I called these hearings individually is to really showcase that and highlight that. I think that it's an opportunity for us to keep the conversation going, and I definitely thank the advocates for bringing that to my attention, not only just from a procedural perspective, but actually having individual resolutions that identify that as well. When I first thought about this, I was just going to have one hearing, but hearing the back-end call of advocates in the community to say, Felicia, no, we need a granular community for a lot of these issues, and we need individualized attention to a lot of these issues for, for health, for procurement, for city services, for housing. And so I definitely thank you all for coming today, and the conversation will continue, and we'll make sure that these agency reports are uploaded to Legistar once we formally get them, so that you all can have the resources that we provided in today's presentations from our city agencies. Thank you all so much.